All right, we'll call this meeting the Bridgeton City Council of January 16th to order. If you will all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with all my attention and with power, indivisible, et veritable, and just for all.
Thank you all very much. The courts will call the vote.
Mrs. Abrams.
Here.
Mr. Fetch.
Here.
Mr. Grimmer.
Here.
Mr. Hein.
Here.
Mrs. Norris.
Here.
Mr. Purcell.
Here.
Mr. Satell.
Here.
Mr. Zimmer.
Here.
We have all eight council members present tonight, along with the nice group here. Agenda approval, it's such a lengthy one here.
Move forward.
Second.
Motion made seconded for approval of tonight's agenda, Councilmember Fetch.
I don't know if anyone else has anything on streets, but if not, our tables, item four.
Second.
Motion made seconded to table item four on tonight's agenda.
That's all I have.
For the discussion, Councilmembers Satell.
I'll wait, I'll talk at my discussion time.
Okay.
It was about snow, but I didn't know that the streets were.
That's fine. All right, those in favor of deleting or tabling item four, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Now for the amended agenda, those in favor of the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Motion carries. Public portion tonight, and we're very fortunate to have most of our police officers here, but we do have Judy Meyer. Would you want to come up, Judy?
Hello, I'm representing the Bridgeton Historical Commission and Society. We have had a speaker series last year, and we're continuing that this year. And next Thursday night, January 24th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Bridgeton Recreation Center, we are hosting Doris Stephen Frankie, who is an expert on the topic of German heritage in our area. And St. Louis was known as the third-largest German city in America. And I think that anyone who has any good determining relations would be very interested in the speaker. I know she is very interesting. I have flyers, I would welcome you to take one. And I'll welcome, and it's a free event. Thank you.
Very good, Judy. Thank you for the bed down by table, maybe people can pick them on their way out. Anybody else from public? Saying none, we'll close the public portion of tonight's meeting and move on to approval of the January 2nd meeting minutes.
Move forward.
Motion's made seconded for approval of the January 2nd, 2019 meeting minutes. Corrections, additions, changes. Saying none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. The minutes are approved. I have one announcement that was sent around to you all in naming the chairperson of our Senior Citizens Coordinating Committee. That person is Stephanie Carter. I would ask.
Move forward.
Motion's made seconded for approval of Stephanie Carter as the Senior Citizens Coordinating Committee Chairperson. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Motion carries. We are now down to the gist of tonight's meeting, and that is the presentation to be made of the state certificate to our own Bridgeton Police Department. Contrary to a lot of people's thoughts, there are some police still working out there on the street, but not all of you in the chamber tonight, so. Kate, would you like to come forward? Chief Hood, do you want to introduce?
Mayor, this is probably the safest place in the city, though, tonight.
Well, I think every place in our city is safer than this, but.
Mayor, members of council, I would like to introduce Chief Glenn Ivind from the Creek Court Police Department. He is also on the Executive Board of the Missouri Police Chiefs Association, and he will be presenting the certificate.
Chief Ivind, nice to have you with us.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, and I'd like to thank Mayor Terry Brooks and the Bridgeton Council for this opportunity to make this presentation to the Bridgeton Police Department. In recognition of certification on behalf of the President of the Missouri Police Chiefs, Tim Lowry, as a member of the Executive Board and Chairman of the Certification Committee, it is my honor to make this presentation to the Bridgeton Police Department. In recognition of achieving accreditation of a credentialing program through Chiefhood and the entire Bridgeton Police Department, certification is truly an acknowledgement of professionalism that requires a commitment to excellence by the entire department. The Bridgeton Police Department has exemplified the dedication to professionalism which is required to earn the state of Missouri certification by the Missouri Police Chiefs. The Bridgeton Police Department has had to meet over 425 standards and sectional standards identified as bullets, composed within the 39 chapters of the Certification Program 15, Certification Status. To date, there are over 36 Missouri law enforcement agencies participating in the Missouri Police Chiefs Certification Program at different stages in the program, with 12 reaching certification achievements. It is truly my honor to present this recognition to Chiefhood and the Bridgeton Police Department and thank them for all their dedication and commitment to the professionalism of the Missouri law enforcement community. As a side note, I am an accreditation assessor, and I started out here, I did their first mock, which I can tell you was a little ugly. But I have to give them all credit because they rolled up their sleeves and worked diligently and very, very hard and professionally. I think this is a great achievement and a testimony to your department and your city administrator and staff. Thank you very much for letting me be here.
Thank you, Chief. I can echo your statement.
Penny, you should be in the front.
All right, now, before we do anything else, I got a good, these flowers to the folks that earn it the most. You know, we are law enforcement, you know, say about the men and women that actually are out there killing the series, but I will tell you, you could not have made it through this accreditation process without clarifying it. So please accept this.
This is quite an honor for our police department. As Chief Ivind said, there's only a select few in the whole state of Missouri who can achieve this certification. A lot of times you're going to hear a lot in the next couple of months, all the way into next year or so, about police departments. And I told Jerry Grimmer I would be quiet pretty quick, so I'll be quick, Jerry, about the whole issue about consolidation. This is one of the reasons we don't want to consolidate. This is a very dedicated, very familiar series. They have helped to protect our city, and I think you all as residents appreciate everything they do for you. I know I do, Mike England does, and we appreciate it. So what they've gone through is a tremendous effort on the part, and they've done very well, and I congratulate them for that. I'm black also because we have a very active police commission, a commission that's come up, please. All right? Come on out.
He keeps taking pictures.
So I want her here tonight.
The ladies up front.
Stand up on your chair.
The police officers, come on.
All right, you guys ready? Okay, so where, who's Jason? What do I do, hit the button? Okay, so I'm looking at this right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, turn it on, I can't really.
I was pushing buttons.
You gotta sure it can be.
You're making me nervous.
All right, here we go.
Those who'd like it.
Oh, they love it, but there's a meeting of the Metro League.
Maybe you should have done the pictures instead of saying. We should have brought you in to do the pictures instead of saying. Saying he's talking with the other ladies. Maybe I don't get the peace of that, too. Two hundred years essentially before we begin here. Before the Constitution.
He's having trouble smiling when his wife's sitting over there.
What happened to my paper?
Who took that paper?
I guess it's not married.
What?
I have a paper.
Oh, maybe they got it.
Oh, the newspaper?
Yeah.
So what's it doing?
I guess.
This is a little bit of a mini council meeting in that we have no agenda items tonight, so we will just hear a few reports. The attorney's report.
Nothing from me, thanks.
There you go. Council communications, we'll start with Councilmember Grimmer.
Okay, the mayor's asked me to be brief on this subject, and I'm going to talk a little bit about better gather. If anybody doesn't know by now what this is all about, basically, and although this is speculation because the official plan hasn't been released yet, there have been some preliminary releases and the Post-Dispatch has written a couple of articles and so forth about it, but basically it's a plan to consolidate all the governments in the city of St. Louis and St. Louis County under one mega government. Basically, it would wipe out, as we know it, Bridgeton included, and it would be done by a constitutional amendment funded, basically, or by a, an initiative petition statewide. So there again, just a couple of things about this thing that I've observed that are pretty concrete. One of the things they have engaged is a lady by the name of Nancy Rice. This lady is about as professional as you can get. Google her and look at the accomplishments that she has done. Some of the things she has done is, she founded Forest Park Forever. She's been a kind of a fixture in high-end St. Louis politics for 30 years. She founded Forest Park Forever. She also got, pretty much was behind the initiative that took the control of the St. Louis Police Department away from the state and back to the city of St. Louis. That control had been in effect since the Civil War. This was the lady behind it. She is now working for that campaign. This is about as heavy-duty a hitter as you can get, so these people are dead serious. The other thing about it is Mr. Seigfeld, the gentleman behind us, the billionaire financier, has pledged $25 million to this campaign, more or less. To put that in perspective, and I use this only as an example, supposedly Labor put about $20 million into the Right to Work campaign, and the example I want to use is you saw the saturation and the result at $20 million on a statewide campaign. Well, one will buy. They've got $25 million at least, and they've got the people to do it. So this is about as serious a threat as I've ever seen to city government. We have to recognize this, and we've got to get behind this and get out, and basically we have to take the message. We're not going to go to St. Louis County, they know what will happen here. They're going to go outstate. We have to take that message to our friends and people outstate and let them know how bad, how terrible this is statewide, because it's just logic. They're not going to stop here. They'll take care of St. Louis, divide and conquer, and then they'll just take everything else right along with it. So it'll take them some time to do it, but they will do it. So folks, we need to be aware of this, start reading up, start paying attention. This is as serious as it gets. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Purcell.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of other things tonight. First, thank you everybody for being here, we really appreciate you guys coming out. It was kind of a light meeting, but thanks for coming and checking out, you know, your local municipal government. Anybody that may be watching this, you know, online in the next few days, again, thanks for tuning in. A couple other quick announcements. One to kind of piggyback off of what Councilmember Grimmer just said, in general, I would be against any, any plan that takes away the sovereignty of our government to provide services to our residents. That being said, personally, I will reserve judgment until the actual plan does come out and is official. The only other announcement that I have tonight is I would encourage all of you to, to go up to the Bridgeton Recreation Center. There, as soon as you walk in the door, just to the left, there's a table set up. They're selling raffle tickets, they're going to be raffling off a couple baskets, some really nice baskets, you know, some jars, there's actually some, some cash in a couple of the jars that they're raffling off. This raffle is to benefit the Bridgeton Meals on Wheels program. Last year, this initiative was extremely successful, they raised over $1,400, and all of that money that's raised stays right here in the city of Bridgeton. When you buy a raffle ticket, I think they're like seven for five bucks, you know, that money is not leaving the city. It's not going out of state, it's not going to a different county, it's staying right here and benefiting the residents in the city here. I think their goal is like $1,700 this year, so I would encourage you all to get out there and to support them, and enjoy the recreation center, it's a great place. Thank you so much, have a great night, and travel home safely.
Thank you. Councilmembers Satell.
Yes, I'm going to speak roughly on just the topic, snow. So, you know, we all just experienced a really nice big snow, and I, well, we had a great turnout as far as our street departments doing an excellent job on our streets. Myself, I also plowed a lot of commercial lots up and down the Rock Road, even blew up my reverse Saturday morning about 7:00, so it's getting transmission redone. But, you know, the good news about that is I got my snowball out and was doing a lot of my neighbors' driveways and sidewalks, and did a whole sidewalk from West Haven to St. Can Shake. And so I'm wondering, I know we have some ordinances up against making sure people also plow their sidewalks out in the city streets, so hopefully maybe they could start focusing on some of that. This snow was a deep enough that it lasted multiple days, and I also noticed when I was out driving around, there's still a lot of vehicles were parked on our snow routes, and maybe we can address how we make sure that the cars are off of the snow routes. I particularly saw them, it was like on Whitehall Manor going through West Haven as I was driving around Saturday morning, but also through the weekend, so I was just wondering if we could hear back to that. But they did an excellent job plowing, I saw they were even back out to day pulling the skid loaders going back, I guess, to get the corners and stuff like that, so it wasn't just a one-day event, it's been a four-day event, I guess, just keep going in preparation for this weekend. So I just wanted to say thank you for our staff that was out there. I guess they were working on 12 hours on and off to get it done this weekend, so, you know, when you're out there as a citizen, you know, say thank you, or just give them an okay sign when you're out there yourself, and they, I think they appreciate it, I don't know, I wave when they go by, and you put a smile back on their face, I can really see that. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Zimmer.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Norris.
I have something. You know that. DNR last night, representing, I said, I guess a new signage, I assume is the lodge changed ownership, it is now the roadway inn. I just was wanting, do they need and clear up all those violations? That is a question. And America Best Contact Eyeglasses and Contacts took over the old Redco location, so if anyone has known that. And Platinum Roofing will be taking over the offices that office, I think it was a little credit unit right next to the Hispanic Market, right here on McKelvey, they're going to be putting in their offices. We approved several signs. And I did want to let you know Hunter will be coming to us for a sign variance on the next, they have a monument sign they want at the entrance to Natural Bridge. And again, I also want to thank the staff during the storm. As my husband, he is out and about, he said, "You certainly can tell when you leave Bridgeton and the streets are not as taken care of." And also congratulations to all the dedicated Bridgeton police, they make us certainly feel safe, and that's why I've been here for 40-plus years, so it has made me very secure. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Aden.
Yes, I also want to compliment the Department on Snow Removal. They did a wonderful job, our police department, they had to be having a mess out there, and so I know they did a good job. I wanted to say something about our police department. I always thought that they'll, that, I always thought that we had the best police department, got one year, of anybody. I mean, I am so proud of this department, but I always thought that they were the best, but I know they're the best. And they're all polite, they're all, you know, friendly, and they all do a great job. So Chief, if you'll just pass that along, that they left, and I wanted to tell them, and the chief, and the people that got this award for them, and they've worked so hard, I'm not sure I'm very excited to. Also, I wanted to talk to Mr. Satell, Purcell, Hein, and myself. I was planning on having the Council Rules Committee meeting in February, and I looked at two dates, the 27th and the 28th. Now, you can get back with me, you know, let me know at the next meeting if those dates are okay, but they're clear on the Bridgeton calendar, there's nothing going on, and so that's what I'm looking at. So you can let me know at the next meeting, and I'll get the materials to you. Either date, okay? That's all. Oh.
That it?
That's all I have to say.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hein.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Chief Hood, congratulations, it's quite an honor for our police department and the city of Bridgeton for the accreditation. I know it took a lot of man-hours and a lot of hard work to get that, get that through, and it, what a great accomplishment. And Yvonne, Mrs. Hood, I bet you had to put up with a lot.
And where's her flowers?
And the commission members from the police commission, congratulations also, it's a great honor to be on that commission that you serve on, and thank you for your time that you give to the city. Thank you constituents also for being here tonight. And I want to thank our street department and public works for the excellent job on the snow removal this past week also. A few months ago, there was some discussion, Councilman Zimmer brought it up, and him and I have recently talked again about it, but I had a couple of incidents in the past couple of weeks on Natural Bridge coming west. One was at night, and I barely missed a jogger that was jogging, you know, on the shoulder because there's no sidewalk there. And then one morning, I noticed a handicapped gentleman walking up that same side, and he had a cane, and his cane was out in the lane. So I just think it's a safety factor, and if we can work on that and get that sidewalk continued from where it left off, up there by City Hall down to the apartments, I think that'd be an accomplishment and probably save us some embarrassment in the future should anything happen, but I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fetch.
Thank you, sir. I would like to also congratulate Chief and Department for the certification, and I think one of the best things about being elected as city councilman is the fact that we get to know these officers personally, and we also know the rest of the employees, all the other departments. We know these employees personally, and I think that's a highlight. We know that they are sincere about their jobs and that they care about this community, and I think that's a highlight that I'm going to take with me whenever I retire from this job. Thank you.
Very good. Well put. We will go on down to the department reports. Vicki, off path.
Just a quick update, most of you know that we've been having some hot water issues up at the Recreation Center, we are diligently trying to fix the problem. We think we narrowed it down to an issue with the generator, and we're hoping to have that figured out within the lead. Our main supervisor, Craig, Craig, too, is working on fixing that. We did have to shut down the indoor pool yesterday due to some mechanical failures with our filter pump, but we got that up in 9:45 p.m. and back open to the public today. I jokingly told Park Board last night that we fixed the hot water issue by just shutting down the pool so you don't need to shower for a day. We've got it covered, covered, we're good, we're narrowing down the hot water. Just a quick mention, the Senior Citizens and Utility Tax Refund is going on until the end of February, for 28th is the last date to submit those at the Recreation Center. And then just a quick moment, we do have a free summer employment workshop coming up for youth on January 30th that we'd like to just make sure everyone's aware of so we can approve our summer help.
Very good. Councilmember Aden.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to say one thing that I had forgotten, it's a minor thing, but I wanted our department to know that Johnny and I wore blue tonight in honor of them, so they are well endeared. We didn't.
Very good. Streets Department, Robert.
The lodge hotel, it's under the same ownership. The one thing they've done is they re-flagged themselves, so instead of being an independent hotel, they work out of an agreement with, it's called the roadway inn, and they're changing those signs out, they can't just change those signs until they get approved, so that's what they're calling for right now.
Okay, yeah, that was the DNR last night for the.
Okay, yeah, that was the DNR last night for the resurfacing of the...
Correct. That has begun.
Okay.
As far as Public Works, we're going in to break through the next winter storm, and that's all I have.
You have an idea, Robert, how many hours we'll put in after this last, from the last weekend?
Those are very hard storms when it goes over three days. I'd rather have a foot of snow than one day, than a foot of snow over the course of three days that the guys have been here the whole entire time.
They did a great job. Chief?
I have one question.
Well, I appreciate that, but there's something that you guys need to know. We appreciate the support from the mayor and the lead council. We could not do this job without your support, and y'all need to know that. We really appreciate it. It allows us to do our job, and it allows us to do our job very well. And I am proud of this police department. They have worked very, very hard on this. This is not just one individual's dream. This took the cooperation of every individual on that department, and they've worked very hard, and I am very, very proud.
As you should be. Kevin, anything?
I am not the mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Grimmer just briefly touched on Better Together. Because they have not issued a report, we're kind of holding back some comments, but believe me, we are going to delve into that issue pretty extensively here. I have been meeting with a couple of the mayors across the county, and there will be efforts, believe me, in what we can or can't do. So keep that in mind, and we'll be at that issue once it's released. I appreciate the job Public Works did. In answer to Councilmember Chetel, yes, I had a few cars that were parked, and we called in, and that got taken care of. So a call has to be made, though, to let the police department or Public Works know that a car's in the way to get them off the street. So keep that in mind. Kevin, how did your business watch? Did you have one this morning?
Yes, sir.
How did that go?
That was, well, we had a presentation letting the business community know that we've received our certification from the Missouri Chiefs of Police Association, so that went well this morning.
Very good. Thank you. Maybe in the future, we'll have one on the Better Together proposal. Councilmember Heine, did you have a question?
Is there, I think Mrs. Hood had some words, but is there any way to suspend Council Rules and let her speak?
That's fine.
Since it's really fast, when we were talking about the police department, I just wanted to tell you that today is Don's forty-first anniversary with the police department.
Well, we will end the council meeting on that high notice of motion to adjourn. Motion's made and seconded. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Motion carries. We adjourned. Thank you all very much.